Kind of like church. How is everyone tonight? It's a wet rainy night. Now you all must be here, what, for item thirteen on the agenda? You're all really concerned about that sixty cent increase in the garbage fee? Is that it? No? Alrighty. Before we start our meeting tonight, if everybody could just stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. And let's see if you know the pledge. Yes? Yes, why don't you bring them up here? Come on. You want to lead us? You want to put your hand on your heart?
No.
No? Alrighty, I'll put them on the spot. Alrighty. I pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all. And kids, we heard you out in the hallway. Great job. Chief? Oh, oh, no. You have a seat. Pastor Mercer, would you give us a brief invocation tonight? Could I impose since you're here? Chief Coleman said that's a better choice.
Well, you need all the prayer you can get, right?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay, let's pray. God, thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to take care of city business and to recognize what has gone on in the city. I pray God for the council tonight, as we pray for them all the time, that they would serve us as they have with great wisdom and vision for the city. Pray for your guidance tonight in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Mercer. Alrighty, at this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. It is Monday, October seventh, a little bit after six thirty PM. We have four members of the council present this evening. Councilman Chudnow is absent tonight. First item on the agenda is we have a whole bunch of, I think it's softball teams outside who we are going to recognize for doing amazing things. So council, if you can join me down on the front. We also have with us today, we have Commissioner Bob Delary is here with us. Bob, would you like to come on up and recognize these children with us from Seminole County? And for those of you who don't know, Bob, Bob used to sit on the Oviedo City Council many moons ago. I won't say how many years ago, him and I used to sit up here together. So I think it's appropriate, you come join us. And we both didn't have gray hair, that's right. What was that? That would have been two thousand to two thousand and four, which means some of these kids, most of these children weren't even born yet. Alrighty guys, this evening, we are recognizing the OBR, girls softball, all-star players, managers, and coaches. So we have a whole bunch of kids this evening. So the first thing I'm going to do is the, we have the six U team lined up, but let me introduce their manager, Andre Mathiasen. Andre, come on up.
Oviedo Six U Softball District and State Winners. Leah Thornsby, come on up. They won the district tournament and the state tournament in the state of Florida. Six U can only go through the actual state level for Oviedo softball or Bayou softball at all. So they were undefeated the entire tournament. They started their very first game down twelve runs with none scored, came back, beat Winter Springs, and then won the whole thing, never given up the lead from that point on. So it was actually an awesome accomplishment. Always three times, or four times through the state tournament. Ella, come on up here, Ella Slavic. Noel Quatri. Stella Scarpinato. Taylor Spigner. My kid, I'm going to call you out, Blake Matisson. I see her, I see her. Dakota, come on, Rusadi. Avery Bray. And I really couldn't have done it without my three awesome coaches. I got Vinnie Scarpinato. Jordan Spigner. And Sean Bray. These are the six U district and state undefeated champions.
Come over here, come over here. Come on, get right here in front of us.
Line up right in front of me, sort of.
There you go. And parents, please, you can get up, take pictures.
So tired, I can have a little bit more. Now we're in, everyone looking up here, big smiles. Yeah, council, big smiles for you, the kids are enjoying it.
Wait for moms and dads. Great job ladies, congratulations. So the next, these young ladies, eight U district champions, state champions, and World Series champions, and let me introduce their manager. Matt Archer, Matt, come on up.
Great job, Matt. Same thing. A little bit about the girls. Okay. Introduce them. No problem. So these girls started off as district champions, went on to become state champions, southeast regional champions, and then finally World Series champions. And I just wanted to say thank you guys for taking the time out of your busy schedule to honor them. So some of the girls only wanted first names, so, but I'm going to go against that because I think their parents may get upset. Our first player, Dallas Esposito. We worked on handshakes. Serenity Fat Singer Rodriguez. My daughter Courtney Archer. Courtney was also selected to the All-World Series Defensive Team, so she got a Gold Allison Fiesha, or AJ. Kennedy Jackson. Kennedy was selected to the All-World Series Team. Emerson Wang. Emerson was also selected for the All-World Series Team. And while this is a team sport, I think it's important that we recognize some of Campbell's accomplishments. She broke the record for batting average in the World Series. That was held for, I think, like eight years or something like that. It was pretty incredible. She was named Tournament MVP and also was elected to the All-World Series Team. Samantha Gartner, or Sammy. Ashlyn Rousiti. Ashlyn also got a Gold Glove and was selected to the All-World Series Team. And the two people I could not have done this without, my one coach, Brian Gartner. And my other coach Doug Rousiti.
Alrighty, come on up front here ladies. And moms, dads, just like before, kind of get up and walk around, get your pictures.
Um, yeah.
Alright. There you go. Alrighty, congratulations ladies.
Yeah, I was just going to say, imagine at a higher level, it becomes harder. If we know about it. Right. We know about it because it tells us the parentage forever.
Alrighty, so now we are up to the ten and under, ten U. These young ladies, district champions, state champions, third place in the World Series. That is exceptional. Their manager, J.D. Wohl. J.D., come on up.
Thank you for having me come in and take pictures. That'll work. How are you? Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. I don't do much. Thank you for having us, all the eight groups. So just a real quick thing I'd like to say about this group, super proud of them because last year, we were in the eight U division. So the girls that just came in were younger, and our girls were younger, so we were a pretty young ten U team. And we won the district and state championship last year in the eight U division and got runner-up in the World Series. So all of a sudden move up to the tens, and you're not expecting as much because you've got girls that are older. Every team we showed up, and we went in the dugout, and they were in the dugout, their girls were looking over us and snickering, "Look how small they are, look how small they are." Because everybody we played was older and bigger, we were just better athletes. Oviedo girls athletes, so.
Yep, exactly. Alright, so first up, we've got Stella Christie. We've got Brielle Foscolo. We've got Peyton Dane. Next up, we have Catherine Sanchez. Next, we have Mattenly Klein. And we have Alexa Ayers. And last up, we have Naomi Pett. And I told one of them they had to give the speech for the team, and nobody volunteered. So we're going to go with the youngest player on the team. Girls coming across the front? Oh, ah! Coaching for the team is Adam Christie. I had asked him to come up first right behind me, but he lagged in the back, so if you're not right back, if you're not right in the back, then... So who's the youngest on the team? Alright, wait for moms and dads, hang on a second. The last team tonight, certainly not least, we have the eighteen U state champions, and they took fourth place in the World Series. Let's get their manager up here, Stephen Worms.
Thanks for having us. As you get older in the divisions of softball, responsibilities, jobs, and all that, tonight we only have half our team here, so we want to congratulate them on a job well done with the states. Their first game in the tournament, we played eleven innings, three hours long, and each game after that was that competitive. So they did an awesome job. We couldn't have asked for anything more. Coaching staff, Britt, Phillip, and Steve Ruff, man, great team, we did a great job. So let's bring Caitlin Worms, my daughter. We'll take Desi Ruff. Desi Ruff was a Golden Glove and the bat for the World Series. And Bree Gordillas, left field. And for the coaching staff, we have Steve Ruff. We have Brittany Force.
Coach, congratulations.
Great job. Whoa, I'm sorry, more pictures? You got it? Alrighty, great job ladies, congratulations.
Is this the one? Hey, Bree Ald also won a bat in the World Series as well, I missed that, sorry Bree.
Well, great job to everyone, and thank you all for coming down. It's always great to see all of the athletes and their accomplishments, it's something that's a lot of fun. Yeah, that may be our last one, we'll see. Next item on the agenda is item number two, it's the approval of the minutes of September sixteenth, 2019. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion?
Nope, all good.
Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and Pastor Mercer, the floor is yours.
Appreciate it, thank you Mayor. As our city council and city officials, our prayers are always with you, that you would continue to govern with wisdom and great vision. The Bible tells us that if any of you lacks wisdom, that a mask of God who gives generously without reproach, it will be given him. And then Psalm one nineteen tells us that your word is a lamp unto my feet and a light in my path. And we came recently to you and asked you if Cross Life Church could give you a Bible, Word of God, and then be responsible for the future of all those who would be elected and also appointed in some of the capacities here as the sheriff, city council, I mean, I'm sorry, city manager, and the fire chief as well, and you agreed to do that. And so at this time, we want to take this opportunity, and I'm going to call on my associate, Tim Dix, to call out the names, but I'd like to first of all present this one to Dominic, Oviedo Mayor, Dominic Percampier, who's served now twenty years, is that right? In one capacity or another, up here. By Cross Life Church, October seventh, 2019. And I just want to present this to you.
We also have Deputy Mayor Bob Pollak. Councilman Keith Britton. Councilman Jeff Chudnow, who's not here tonight. City Manager Brian Cobb. Police Chief Dale Coleman. And Fire Chief Jeff Buchanan.
Council, why don't we all go down up front, bring our bibles with us, and let's get a picture. Now, Pastor Mercer, it was absolutely our pleasure to partner with you on the secure Oviedo schools, but can you refresh our memory, how much money did you guys actually raise?
It was just a few dollars short of $80,000.
Well, you see, that's the work that makes Oviedo, Oviedo, and all of our thanks go to you, because that's all going into security systems for all the local schools.
Mainly the high schools.
Mainly the high schools. Are you doing another one next year?
We're thinking about it.
Well, you know, if you need us, we'll be there for you. Well, thank you, Pastor. We really do appreciate it. Give them a big round of applause, guys, because $80,000 raised is pretty impressive. Alrighty, so we... Public comment is still open, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address city council at this time? I have no written requests.
Hi, my name is Megan Sladek, I live at 6007 Lake Charm Circle. I just wanted to make you guys aware that this Saturday at 9:30 at Boston Hill Park, the Oviedo Preservation Project is going to be unveiling the first of probably about 20 historic markers. So we have been working on researching all of this and saving up to start installing the state-approved historic markers that are part of, you know, the big statewide plan. So like, this is a really big deal, and we're excited to have a lot of family members of the people who are mentioned in this marker, who are planning to come. So if you're available, 9:30, there will be Danish and Oviedo roasted coffee available, so hopefully, some of you will be able to come, and everybody from the public as well is welcome. Thanks so much. Boston Hill Park, right by the fire station.
Great, thank you, Megan. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda that's 4 through 15 as presented.
Second. A motion, we have a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
No, sir, looks good.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Looks good.
Alrighty, I will have to agree with everybody, it's pretty mundane stuff on there this evening. Motion on the table is to adopt, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So we have no public hearings, we have no first reading of ordinances, our first item on the agenda is item number 18. Give me just a quick moment here to catch up. Item number 18 is Resolution Number 3829-19. It is the Republic Services Contractual, RRI Adjustment. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a request for the council to enact a contractual 2019 Refuge Rate Index Adjustment for the Republic Services contract, which would increase the amount that's paid to the Republic Services to $18.40 per month for our residential garbage and recycling franchise. Section 13 of the contract allows Republic to request these types of rate index adjustments. There's about 3 different categories that it's allowed. The Refuge Rate Index is based on the different components within the costs that go into creating the rate for Republic. And so, the last rate index that was done was back in 2017, in which the rate was, at that time, said at $17.77. The Republic has gone through and done the analysis regarding this rate analysis in 2019, and it came out to $18.40, which is a $63, excuse me, increase, this is per month. Staff reviewed the rate adjustment and found it consistent with the contract, with the exception of one thing. The contract, Section 13.03, requires that the requests be made in June. At that time, we were working with Republic on a possible renewal or extension of their existing contract, and we were also looking at some other programs to, that would effectuate the cost of the program. During that time, since we were working on that, the request for this refuge rate increase was not submitted. They didn't submit the rate increase until September. With that being said, the city attorney did take a look at it, and the city attorney has defined that they did not meet the requirements of the contract and not submitted by June 30th. And so therefore, city council has no obligation to grant this rate index, adjustment. Actually, the... And we agree with the city attorney on that, the city council does not have any obligation to grant this, and so... But however, when we looked at it as a staff, we looked at it as sort of an extenuating circumstance, because we were working on a different program at the time, and so we recommend approval of it. The increase will increase the total cost, which would be what would be paid by the residents per month, from $19.76 to $20.43, which is a 67-cent increase. This morning, you received an email from Mr. Boog, and we recognized that there was a typographical error in your memo, as well as your resolution, those typographical errors have been corrected. It's recommended that city council adopt Resolution Number 3829-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address city council on this item? I have no written requests. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3829-19.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
You know, nobody likes to increase things, but 60 cents to keep a company that, I mean, I've been here for 14 years, and that's all I've known is Republic, and they have done an amazing job, I thought, with all the conditions and the recycling issues and China and all that stuff, you know, just to have the increase so small and still keep up that level of service, they are a special bunch, so I'm glad we still got them, and it's all good.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Yeah, the large portion of this is from fuel, and fuel has gone up since then, and insurance, I can completely understand the need to have this small increase to collect that, so that they can recover that.
Great, thank you. Councilman Britton?
Yeah, I'd just like to... Is this the first time we've raised these rates since we... 17 was the last time. 17? So, you know, it's not much, and I can recognize that the stress that industry's under, so they're doing good service, if they weren't, they wouldn't be here, so I think we're good with this.
Great, thank you. And I'll echo that, I mean, as Mr. Cobb stated, I mean, Republic has been negotiating with staff and since the summer, I mean, at least before that, the spring, and they were looking at all different types of alternatives for not only the recyclables, but the garbage, even trucking it up to a renewable energy plant where they burn it. So there were talks going on consistently, and not being raised since 2017, you know, 63 cents is 63 cents, I understand that, but in the scheme of things, I don't think it's that big of an adjustment, and it is something that they are entitled to by the contract. Now, Mr. Cobb, you are working on an RFP though, I believe, for a bid process on the renewal next year, correct?
Yes, we will be bringing that forward shortly, probably closer to the beginning, 1st of 2020, we'll be bringing the RFP in.
Right, because at this point in time, there would be no just extending it with Republic. I think Mr. Groot has, his opinion has been that this time, this now, has to go out to bid.
Yeah, the contract has a very specific termination clause in it, and we've exhausted all of the extensions that can occur.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anything else for the good of the order?
The only thing that, and I asked Mr. Cobb about this, but because it was just an increase because of these indexes, it's not in here, but one thing that we definitely need to look at when we do go out to bid is the bear brook cans, get that into the next contract, so just want to throw that out there.
And it shall be? I think that was one of the things they were working on in the RFP. See how those could be worked into it. The other thing, Mr. Cobb, as you're writing it, and I know we briefly discussed it, I think the type of service that we have is very important. You know, everybody's become accustomed to the larger cans, the arm, you know, as opposed to garbage cans being thrown all over the street, so I'd hate to see the city go backwards.
We're gonna maintain our level of service.
Anything else? Nope. Alrighty, motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 3829-19. All members in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 19. Item 19 is a Resolution Number 3833-19, supporting State Road 434 short-term improvements. This is really an extension of the workshop from last Monday. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a request for the city council to express its support for the State Road 434 short-term improvements. As you mentioned, Mayor, that Seminole County and their consultant, Kittleson and Associates, made a presentation to you regarding the State Road 434 project and their completion of their planning study and the recommendations for the short-term improvements. They, once they, when they had finished the study, they learned from Metro Plan that the long-term widening of the roadway, there was gonna be difficulties obtaining funding, and so they shifted over into a complete streets program, and so they've come up with a funding program and a way to get the short-term improvements taken care of. Projects been divided into 2 sections, section 1 and section 2. The first concentration will be on section 1, which is the northern part of the study from State Road 417 down to Franklin Street. Tonight, the resolution expresses support for that, FDOT has asked for expressions of support from the county and each of the local governments involved, and so this resolution expresses the city's support for the short-term improvements. We recommend that you adopt Resolution Number 3833-19.
Thank you. Commissioner Dohary, do you have anything to add this evening, before I open up the public comment?
Thank you, Mayor, and as you and the city manager stated, this is an extension of the workshops that we had here last Monday. I would like to make sure that I'm introducing Brian Cunningham with Kittleson Associates. Brian is the engineer of record on this project. And I know you've said that this is a short-term project, it is, however, the improvements that we're gonna be doing, they're not throwaway improvements, these improvements will be needed for the long-term project as well. The good news is, we're not asking you for funding. And I would also tell you that between the county and Metro Plan Orlando, the funding has been secured, we're partnering with DOT to secure the rest of it with the right-of-way. We're hoping to get into design at the beginning of 2020. It'll take us about a year to do the design of the road in the stormwater. Once that's done, once we get to, I think, 50, 60%, then we can actually do right-of-way acquisition. By state law, we have to have a significant amount of engineering done before we go into acquisition. Once that takes place, the acquisition will happen, and then we'll hope to go into construction as soon as possible. We believe that we can get this project done in about 4 to 5 years, in talking to our staff, as well as the engineer, we're hoping to move that up quicker, if we can have some willing sellers of the right-of-way. The good thing about this project is that this project will be helping the flow of traffic north and south through Oviedo to Winter Springs, as well as the cross-connects for the trail. As Brian Cobb, the county city manager, spoke about, this is a complete-street project. With the changes in the federal requirements, we cannot go for a roadwinding project at this time, but I believe that this will help those neighbors and those neighborhoods up and down 434 access 434 more safer and more expeditiously. And we are asking for your support. Once we get your support, we already have the city of Winter Springs, tomorrow, we'll be asking for the county commissioners for their support, and then we'll petition the state to move forward with this project. And I believe me, we're gonna be moving as quick as possible. So, thank you, and please vote in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any questions?
Any questions for the Commissioner?
Good.
No, we're good, thank you, Bob. Alrighty, I have no written requests to speak on this item, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3833-19.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Well, first, I just want to say thanks to Bob and the county people for taking this under, and I always say this, you know, through the years, there's always problems you're gonna have in government, and traffic, and issues, and if you can't fix them right-of-way, it's always good to have a good plan. Back in the 80s, if people who were sitting up here would have had the vision that you all now have, we wouldn't even be dealing with this, but, you know, it's comforting to know that the county has always worked with us, and we're together with them, and we'll get this project fixed, and then we won't have to hear about traffic any longer. 426, 419, 434, yes, it's gonna take some time, but especially all you people in the audience that are running for election to sit up here, just always have a plan, even if it takes years, it's always nice to know you have it, and Bob, again, thanks for your support on this, you're a mover and a shaker, and we know it'll get done quick, appreciate it, thanks.
Great. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
I just want to thank you guys for bringing us here and keeping your eye on our traffic needs here in Oviedo, and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Britton, anything to add?
Just ditto, I appreciate it, it's a pleasant surprise after we heard where we were on the priority list, so thanks for doing this.
Well, Bob's chuckling, not only did we fall from the middle of the pack on the four-laning, I think that we fell off the list and then like, right out of Metro Plan, it just, the way the federal dollars are now doled out and the criteria for it, 434 would have been done in 2045, or something like that, if I remember seeing the list, or the lack of list at Metro Plan for the roadways. So, getting very creative, the county, along with their engineers, looked at the complete-street concept, and as Commissioner Dohary pointed out, even though our memo says "short-term", the roundabouts are designed to handle the four-lane road later on, so they're not gonna be built and then tore out once the four-laning does get done, which it eventually will, it's just a matter of time. Commissioner, of course.
Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't state the fact that Kittleson Associates is nationally recognized for doing roundabouts, not just in the state of Florida, but nationally, they are the national experts, and it's always good to have the right people and the right team, we do have the right team, not just the consultants, but at Metro Plan, because I could tell you, Nick, who is the director of facilitating improvements, he actually dug deep when we found out that we fell off the list, and he was actually able to find $1.5 million for engineering, $5.2 million for construction, and another $4 million in another category for right-of-way. So there's a lot of different staff people across the boards digging deep for this project, and I just wanted to make sure that they're all recognized, especially Kittleson and Associates. Thank you, Mayor.
Of course. Of course. So the, as I was saying, I mean, they're not being designed to be throwaways, which will be welcomed sometime in the future. You know, and all of this is on top of all the other projects that the county and the city and the state are doing here in the city of Oviedo. I mean, in the next year or two, there's going to be, you know, roads are, congestion is the number-one thing we hear from everybody. We understand it, we get it. Nobody's going to build us a free bridge over McCullough out to 419 and get most of the traffic out of Oviedo. That's just not going to happen. But what is going to happen is 419 and 426, starting May of 2020, the contract should be let out, according to DOT. The widening will start from Oviedo High School to just past the bowling alley. The county has two intersection projects that they're doing in the city of Oviedo, one over on 419 in Lockwood, one at Mitchell Hammock and 434. And the city has a turn lane project at Lockwood, northbound, left-hand onto Mitchell Hammock. So there are many things that are going to be happening, and it'll be like UCF next year, under construction forever, it's going to feel like. But when it's done, as Councilman Henkin alluded to, and everyone has, has said to the public over the years, in the next two or three years, everything's going to be much different around here, the way the traffic flows. So Commissioner, you've been involved in everything from 419 and 426 at the very beginning, when you sat here with us, till now, you've been a great advocate, always, with the city, and we do greatly appreciate it. Anything else for the good of the order from the Council before I call the question on the resolution? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 3833-19. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner, thank you. Go design some nice roundabouts. Make, you know what we all should do? We really should just turn into Carmel, Indiana. Right? Now, you guys are involved in that, I think you told us the other night. If anybody hasn't Googled Carmel, Indiana, write it down, and later on when you're home, Google it. They got rid of every traffic light and put in roundabouts in Carmel, and when we went up there this summer for a graduation, it was impressive. So, anyway, great job, guys. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on. Item number 20, discussion items. We have none. Brian, we're up to your report.
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Alrighty. Mr. Groot?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. We're up to the council member reports. I'm up first. The only item that we have is on Sunday, Florida Hospital is having a community event for their ER here in Oviedo. That's from 2 o'clock till 5 o'clock. Now, there is an event for elected officials and dignitaries from 12 till 1. I am not able to make it. Is anybody on Council able to go 12 to 1?
I can go.
Alrighty. Bob, you can go?
Yes.
If it's with the consensus of Council, I'm going to write them a welcome letter. I'll sign it, and I'll send it along with Bob to be delivered to them. Is that good?
Yes.
Good, Steve?
Good.
Good? Alrighty. Mr. Cobb, I know, I think Mr. Kelly's been, been working on that, so maybe we can get him a letter, maybe Barbara, if you could frame it, you know, make it, make it into something for them, and we'll get that delivered on Sunday. That's all I have tonight, so we'll go on to the next, who's up next? Deputy Mayor, you're up.
I don't have a whole lot. I, I witnessed something on, on Friday that I just thought was, was tremendous, with just the outpouring of the city for one of our firefighters, and it's just, it's just amazing how everybody comes together all the time, and, and I, I, you know, they'll always be in my thoughts and prayers, and, and I just want to make sure that they're taken care of. If y'all ever need anything, just let me know.
Anything else, sir?
Homecomings. They, they went pretty smooth. I don't know how the Oviedo on the Park Fair on Saturday night, but that, I drove, I just drove by there and looked, it was, I saw Terry out there pulling her hair out, so...
Can I just add a little something to that? It went fairly well. I think there were a few parents who may have gotten a little bit upset with being told where they should and should not park, but it's unfortunate that that occurs. We have a 250-spot parking lot, but yet everybody still has to try to park inside the apartments, even though there were police officers there, there were signs there. One young lady got towed, the parent came over and evidently had quite an issue with it, is what I was told. But, so, you know, all the parents who are listening out there, it's homecoming, everybody was warned, it was both high schools on the same night. I mean, it, it, honestly, guys, it's uncalled-for to take your frustrations out on staff like that. It just isn't necessary. Just park your car in the big 250-spot lot, take a walk over, get your pictures, and, you know, send the kids on to homecoming. It's very simple.
And we have other parks. My, my son took his pictures around Mike Park, on the dock over there, and there weren't, weren't hardly anybody, there wasn't hardly anybody over there, and it was, it was a beautiful setting.
Some folks were over at Canterbury, I saw, or, yes.
Yeah, and over at Most Special Squad, too.
Your, your, your son has great hair. Oh, should I not bring that up? Is that a sore subject?
Oh, Lord.
You're not going to talk about it?
Nope.
I'll show everyone that picture later. I'm sorry, Bob.
That's all I have.
That's okay. Steve, you're up.
Alrighty, just two quick things. Mr. Mayor brought a great point, and I'll just direct this, as I always give you all tips who are running for office, the garbage cans, don't succumb to the temptation to go back to garbage cans. We like the arm, the recycle bin, it took a long time, and we all had different cans, and they were thrown all over the street. So I think everybody likes the way it is. Certainly look at, when you put your bid out, you know, what you get, but keep those arms, because everybody likes those, and they are, they are convenient. Remember when we first got them, everybody said, oh, we only have one can, it doesn't hold a lot, but it's 96 gallons, that's, you know, three, four garbage cans, so I just fill it up.
And we own the cans now.
And we own the cans now, so when you guys are negotiating that next one, you know, try to, try to hang on to that. Don't go back to the old, old days. Keep moving forward. And then, just to echo Deputy Mayor, you know, I've always said, if, if you were having a problem, or you were in trouble, or there was some emergency, you know, there's no place you'd rather be than Oviedo. I mean, coming from New York, I mean, New York's a great city, but, you know, Bob is right, what we witnessed on Friday, I mean, terrible tragedy, and you see this community cry together, grieve together, and just support this family. I mean, and I, and I tell them, and I think you'd all agree, you know, they will never be alone. Losing this little baby was just so terrible, but, you know, we all send our, our regards to Danny and Candace and Scott and their whole family. That was, that was a tough day, but again, having, having our fire department and police and family, extended Oviedo family, will, will get them through it. But that was a good job lifting them up, and chief, send them our regards, tell them we're, we're never going to forget them, we're here if they need us, so hopefully the healing will, will start. So that's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Chudnow's not here, so Keith, we're up to you.
Okay, well, we, we mentioned it, but the Oviedo Homecoming Parade was another, another fun time.
Thank you.
Lots of candy went out, and I took the name tags home, Bob, and I still have yours at home, so I'll bring it back in so we can use them the next time. And I was just on Google Earth looking up Carmel, Indiana, and they, they really have some cool roundabouts, and they have what they call a Michigan U-turn, where you never have to make a left turn. Everything is a right turn.
Well, and, and for, for some in the audience who really like this, because in the middle of each roundabout, they have a piece marked in the middle of each one, and it's, and it was very, very, very cool to see.
And last thing, I, I won't be able to go to the top event on Saturday. I'm going to go up to northern Michigan this week and see an uncle I haven't seen in a long time, so maybe see some fall foliage and a deer or two, so I'll be out of town this weekend.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Great. Alrighty. Mr. Cobb, anything else for the good of the order?
Uh, no.
Mr. Groot?
Nothing.
Nope. Chiefs, anybody? Council? Future meeting dates, we have Monday, October 21st, we have a CRA meeting, and we have our regular session, so that starts at 5:30. November 4th, 6:30 PM regular session. November 18th, 6:30 PM regular session. Then Monday, December 2nd, 5:30 PM, there's a CRA meeting, Mr. Cobb, how are you, how are we going to handle that one, or? I'll let you guys figure that out, I'll just announce it for now. Monday, December 2nd, 5:30 PM CRA meeting, and then 6:30 PM, there's a regular session. So with all that being said, it is almost 7:30, and we're adjourned.